Hello Steve.
Hello Steve, hello, how are you guys? What, Nico? Just realized I've forgotten on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, go back.
I'm lost without it.
Yeah.
Well, not without yours, but not mine.
Right. Document. Oh.
I'll tell you some stories about the living room on that line.
You're really an angel.
Yeah. She was the bartender at Snyder House for years.
Gotcha. And she looked. She didn't nail it. She didn't nail it. I think she would be the owner.
She could have.
Oh yeah? Yeah, she's. The law.
She's a nice person.
I started with, I walked out of there and the door was wide open. So I said, Hello, Mr. Wilson?
Oh no.
I heard this.
That will be known. She got out of the house for years.
He hasn't.
She. Or Wilson's on the corner.
Yeah.
Oh.
For it.
It used to be a general store, something or other.
Hello.
Southwest corner of the border.
The pillars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where we, it was two park things over there. Yeah. So when does? I'm sort of be hit by the whole thing.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Well.
But I don't know where she.
So seventy-eight is, is a house. Eighty-two seventy-eight, which is the.
That's property, but he's buying, he's looks like he might have bought all of it. Because he's, he's, now she's showing us the property on, but it's being subbed off.
Right.
But she's, she's remaining there at least.
That was my sense.
Yeah, she was concerned about the driveway.
Access to the driveway and having the.
Uh, exit. Where, what do you call those, and driveways, drive business.
The access to the driveway, if the line is somewhere in here, okay? The access to the driveway, to the property, is going to be on the.
Yeah.
Parceled off. Peace. Not that that can't be available to the company with a, with a. Is, yeah.
So we don't, that's a good question. I assumed that. I assumed at first that she bought all of it. Not the subdivision. But these don't. They're wanting us to work. But one of those, please. Buy that piece. Which case I would think she would have had to do the subdivision.
Right.
Yeah.
It's typically, it's all still young.
Hello Mark.
Hey. Hey Mark, hello. How are you?
I'm good, it's.
Good.
Missed you guys, having fun.
Yeah.
Want some entertainment?
Hang out.
Okay.
Are your projects all done?
Yeah, yeah, I'm pretty.
Waiting for the next one?
No. I, I didn't think it was possible to be done.
No.
Every time I finish one, there's another one.
I don't know, I see, uh, actually I'm supposedly someone's going to paint my house, but I'm kind of impatient, so I'm doing.
What are here?
Yeah. When we turned around about three weeks ago and our daughter's who's moved out of the area to the Apple District, said, you know what? I think I should just sell my house. Well, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done if you're going to sell. Guess who?
Yeah. What bad is it for?
I guess so.
This house they put in was called Smart Turn, which is not smart at all. If anyone ever tells, tries to sell it, so you don't go for it. It's a particle board.
Oh yeah.
Crap.
Yeah.
And it's just, it's a sponge. So all the ends suck up chill and moisture and rot like hell. And so I've been not taking the whole board off because it'd be tearing the whole house apart. So I'm cutting the bottoms.
Cutting the bottoms and the ends?
Well, the bottoms are going up a foot and then sealing them and, and it looks okay. It's not perfect, but now I'm going to try some epoxy and see how that works just on another part to avoid taking the whole window apart.
No, Linda.
No, it's fine except for right where it sits on the sill. If they would have just left it gap, it would have been fine too, you know?
I don't know if it's the same stuff that the astronauts used in their new place on South Shore. It's a, it's got a it's got a finished surface, but the, it's.
Purple. Yeah, well, it's, it's, they call it smart trim and it's not smart. It's a really foolish way to go. Pay for it. I mean, it's either seater or, or you, but you know.
Hardy board.
Now I've got Hardy and the Hardy does actually rot.
Does it?
I've got Hardy, but gotta use the you know, the PVC boards.
Oh, maybe.
Yes. Easy. That wouldn't be doing nothing up.
I was under what circumstances does Hardy enter a race?
You know, heavy duty, lots of water, like where I've got some gutters that kind of leak, uh, and siding.
So constant exposure of water.
Yeah. Whatever. You're going through a kind of, well, without this, oh, cans of clay. Doesn't look like there's a lot of newness. Uh. Maybe not, so I'm going to are the overlay districts.
Are the overlays? Yeah. Speaking of there's not a lot of new, the overlays are quite old and oftentimes. What else?
Um.
Just to understand the document that Kevin sent, is the, is the, is this a change noted? So the changes would be underlined or just make them highlighted?
I think the red is.
Red. The red is changed?
Yes.
The red is new. Okay, so there's a lot of red there.
Yeah, it wasn't much in the code.
Okay, okay. I have to be honest with you. I've memorized the code yet, but I'm working on it.
It's okay. What? So.
I didn't tell you.
Personally, I a number of years ago, Tom Lightfoot and Bruce Barrington tried to establish a historic district. Didn't go well. You know, the regulations with historic districts.
Oh.
Old. Uh. I got a copy of the regulations and it's uh. You know. You want to paint your house?
No, you, no, you did. It's not, or may I?
I got permission. You want to?
Want to replace a window?
It better be original style. One.
Um. Well, the monument on this one is a little thin. The original monuments were.
Uh, if you're going to add it all, it's going to be approved. And it's going to fit the historic motif. Yeah, I, I live in a house that was built eighteen seventy-five. Okay?
I don't know if that's historic.
Yeah, that's. You know, my neighbor's house is other same. Martha's is a little older. One on the corner that Bruce, Gary Owens, I believe the oldest one. But. But get back on the weapon and the district proposal will go from John Street around the corner to uh, on fourteen to the corner by Caitlin's driveway. Back uh, towards the lake. And I just I like that in saving houses, I really do. You know, I, I think it'd be a shame to tear down a house like mine and put up some marble.
Yeah.
But I the, one of the things is you can't demolish a house without permission. Uh, we have to prove that it's no way you can save it. And then you get to rebuild on the same footprint in the same style.
Well, that's not an issue that we're dealing.
Well. Sharon's said we need to look at it. I asked her, what does she want us to do with it? She said, I don't know. So I've asked you to look at it. That way, if down the line, people start asking you know, it's supposed to go to the board. Uh, let's the board have, you know, one of those, I don't know, create a brighter.
Yeah.
Um.
So this building is a landmark?
Yes. All, all these buildings, you know, if you want to tear down the right center because it's on a park as we speak, this building's on a park. So.
What was the original purpose of this building? The use?
Hmm?
The original use?
Original use of this building, from what I can get, at one time there's a theater, this, they just go down below. Uh, at one time there's a laundromat in here. Apartments. Uh, it's been multi-purpose forever. The brick center was a schoolhouse. But.
So I, I know that there's some individual buildings that have plaques in front of them saying it's a historical building. But those buildings are typically still original use. And it seems, I see no value in attaching, you know, trying to make a building, an historical building when its purpose has totally different from its original intentions. And it doesn't look anything like an original.
Mostly, it's the exterior.
So.
Right. You can do what you want inside, you can gutter. And, or, or whatever the.
Well, that was true and then there was that period of time when there was the twenty-five percent rehabilitation tax credit and a lot of that related to interior changes and and SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, got their, got their clause into interior changes as well. We went through that with the, with the Granite Building in downtown Rochester, you know? They're going to send a uh, a notebook that thick profiling the degree of rot associated with each of the one hundred and thirty-nine windows in the building. It was it was crazy. There's pigeons coming out. Come on.
It's just, yeah. Hello Bruce.
Hi.
Another good example of that is the museum, it's a boat museum now, first schoolhouse that was up for sale and probably will go to auction, I guess, based on what it read.
What in all of?
Yeah, no, here on fourteen, where the, they call it the, um. Oh, that's a.
The boat museum?
The boat museum.
Museums.
Yeah. Built.
Bob Bell's.
Yeah.
I mean, you look through that, you can't even tell where any of the schoolhouse used to be. What's the point in trying to preserve that?
Well, rock, raw, that's outside the knowledge of us.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
That's just now. Okay. AB was the line. It's just south of AB.
Got it, okay.
Sure, but what, what bothered me in several instances were related to these overlays was that there were there's changes that have been made to them. They're not all twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Some of them go back quite some ways. Uh, if, for example, you go to, uh, um. Water-related features map number thirteen, uh, it shows, uh, it shows the Meyerly's, uh, dock as being a public waterfront access point. It's not, that was, I don't know how long ago that was sold.
Uh, yeah, but I don't, not sure if the rights to the right of way were sold.
Doesn't the right of way, though, exist?
That whole property was right.
Right. But then it got sold.
The property got sold.
It had to come, get it.
So you might look.
Continue to the right of way.
Then you may have in that D those right of ways are in it.
Well, then another instance, also in our neighborhood, uh, that area next to Sue Crenshaw, isn't that a public access?
Uh, not, it realizes is the.
Okay. Okay.
And that's.
And that's not yours.
Yeah. It's not on there.
No.
And then there was one more, actually.
That's what I heard, understood.
Near, um. Think it's where, uh, Halligan. Uh, but in that area.
It's after meal, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, that one I think is.
And Scott Johnson will be surprised to learn that.
Who's out of New Orleans?
His, his is a number utilized.
Well. They listed, uh, the Sills property down at the end of the Lollapalooza.
Yeah.
They've got a commercial marine construction gotten in there and they have private docks that they rent. You can't squeeze much more than.
And are there only two harbor management areas on the bay? One for tide science and one for Crenshaw's?
Mark, what do you know about that?
Say again. There's an overlay district map that shows the, that there are two harbor management areas in the village. One related to tide science and another one appears to be related to Crenshaw's. I'm surprised that there's not a harbor management area, for example, for the outfalls.
That's from in the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Well, are, are you talking about mooring areas?
Well. A harbor management uh, area would, to my understanding, be an area where there has been, there have been rights underwater, rights granted to the, to the marina. Like we went through with, uh.
Well, the best statement is Caitlin Owens.
Caitlin actually Owens.
I think if you look at map thirteen, are those the areas you're talking?
I was looking at sixteen. Oh, I'm sorry. No, you're right.
Thirteen.
It's thirteen, yes.
Yeah, and those are mooring areas.
But then on, uh, on sixteen it shows two hashed areas as the harbor management area.
I own land under the water too, across the RV park.
Yeah, I know you do.
Yeah. It's an old resident deed.
On, on that, on six. The whole shoreline is harbor management.
Oh.
So it's black and hashed, so it means.
Well, black is vacant parcels.
Yeah.
So the vacant parcel is, is what Bruce is referring to.
But what are those two areas for?
And then the other river is is over by Cape. And I don't know what vacant part.
It, I think it was intended to make land which is uh, doesn't have structures built on.
Yeah.
Golf course.
Those are, as Bruce was saying, those are, you're deeded, right Bruce?
Yes.
Yeah. And it's probably true over there that Caitlin, which was the old Sills. That whole areas. I mean, I don't know, if you looked at it, you'd probably find with its, what a whole harbor and inside where the barges were sunk. That's just my guess.
Where, where do I find these maps you guys are looking at? I'll get, uh. On Bruce's email to us, uh, what was it, yesterday, maybe four?
It was attached to that?
Yeah. Bruce's email from Friday. Monday's PV meeting.
Right. There's two attached.
Got attachments. One of those. Down.
Let's see appendix.
Well, all right. Actually, it's under the Wednesday, the thirteenth. Email. And then he sent another one in that same screen.
Okay.
Same time? Same time, no.
The Friday is what I'm looking at?
No, you're looking at Wednesday, looking for Wednesday, sorry.
But. So I did tell us, you know, we were talking about uh, this, 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 uh. Building, what I'm talking about. Uh, well, yeah, it has to do with, we've got an application where there are two components. The subdivision and then a, a building. Uh, and the subdivision may be straightforward, but the building still requires DEC
Right.
Approval and and when I was talking to Kevin, I said, doesn't it make? I feel uncomfortable giving any kind of approval.
And we know where the line is.
Until we know what DEC is going to, to say.
Mm-hmm.
And I understand the logic of, well, we can give preliminary until the DEC results, whether it's going to be solved. But I just feel more comfortable saying, let's pull off a, on that one until we resolve. But other option is that we could give preliminary contingent on DEC's decisions and being able to block way out.
Locate the structure that is planned. What's, what's the urgency that it's coming to us?
I just.
Double barrel.
I don't know, that's what I'm looking at still. Um. I just.
I believe he has to get stamp prints started for you guys and for DEC to move forward. And he's not going to do that if, uh, you guys aren't even going to consider it as an approved building lot.
All right. Boss. I think we've run into doubles before doing these contingencies on DEC. As we found out on fourteen. And then we get stuck with something. I don't know. Mark, I'm trying to figure out how to get this back where it was.
What do you want it to do? I can tell you.
Uh. Right now, the main screen is showing pure light and uh.
Just double click yourself if you want to see yourself.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yep. Yeah, double check with Mark Wilson, but I believe they want stamp prints and he can't go forward with the stamp prints until he knows what he's allowed to do.
Mark, just give me a second.
Okay.
Yeah.
In about six minutes, we'll get to that, okay? Okay, um.
Going back to the comprehensive plan for a second, Bruce, if, if there's reference in, on page six of the plan to the waterfront consistency law. What? What is that? Is that part and parcel of the LWRP or is that a that's separate?
That's a Kevin question.
Kevin, what is the waterfront consistency law that's referenced in the LWRP?
You have a waterfront consistency law in your book that just codifies the master plan?
In my book?
Yeah, in your zoning book. I believe it's chapter one eighty-seven, off the top of my head. I can tell you for sure. Hold on a second.
Bill. Uh, it's somewhere on page six. I made a note to myself.
One eighty-six is waterfront consistency law.
Okay.
And it brings the LWRP into the book. It tells us about the WAF. It gives definitions, uh, tells the intent, um, talks about penalties for offenses against, uh, tells for enforcement. It's just the waterfront assessment or waterfront, uh, law, consistency law.
That's referred to as the waterfront consistency law as opposed to the code? I guess?
A code is a law. They're one and the same.
Okay.
That's where we run into problems with people. Uh, you talk about code and they say, well, the law and vice versa and. Um.
Thanks, Kevin.
Uh, what update on one fifty-one? I have asked that it be, uh, postponed until next month.
Supposed until next month. Uh, for meeting this month, I've got several rather hairy contentious. Things going on and I don't wanna.
But again, it's time.
If everything gets sold out on those. I hate having angry people, don't.
Think that's a reasoned approach.
Um, we're. Well, there's, I don't know how deep those lots.
Yeah. Six hundred fifteen. Yeah, couple feet short.
Yeah, I I thought it was interesting, they were remnants of the old orchard. And I'm assuming those rows of bushes were grew there.
That's why it was named that. That's why it was named Blueberry Hill. And they used to sell a lot of blue. Yeah, well, it's where we always got the blueberries.
That was a song came from? Something about a thrill.
Juggernaut checker or?
Or others.
What was it?
I don't see Rosie's Park on here, is it?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Can believe the track, if there is some sort of. Well, I can.
Once people know of it.
And charging fifty cents.
Then just forwarded. Lines for the shed that Bruce is going to be talking about.
Yeah.
Check your emails, adjust team.
Yeah.
Well, it says ten and a half, that's it. It just came into mind.
Yeah, I sent it this morning when I talked to you. Did it just come through to you?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's maybe about ten minutes ago.
Okay.
Okay, it is magic hour. Call this meeting to order. We have a forum. This meeting was advertised in the Wing Times and posted on the Village website. Our first action is to review the minutes of the August fourth, but for leaving.
I've got uh, sent some changes.
It was it was only a change to, it wasn't a change to the minutes, it was a change to the work session.
Right.
Discussion, just to make certain of the designation about the. Uh, discussion, the short term rentals was.
I I made that change and I think I said it right.
Yeah, you didn't.
By the way, it's nice to have you.
I'm curious.
Thank you, nice to be back.
I know that we approved the minutes, that's second thing.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Minutes and then approve. Okay, our first. Uh, application. Is Mark Wilson. Subdivide ninety by one sixty five from the existing one ninety five by one sixty five. Great two lots. Mark, go come on up. And you can either. Pull, pull it out, stand there, or you can pull a chair up. One of those comfy chairs and. Tell us about your project, Mark.
Well, I'm looking to pick up that little lot right there, the diagram. Ninety by one sixty five, I think it is. Um, there's an existing tree car, like a old tree car garage just kind of falling down. Um, I said, went before, I was looking at this for a little bit. And went a couple different ways, I was gonna try to move it over a little bit. Then you're getting the DEC involved, that's not fun, because I found out, so, um. It was, they were in a garage here prior to work that was knocked down, should have known the head up.
There was a.
There was a cottage here as well. But what I'm thinking is instead of just getting into all that with the DEC and everything else. I spoke to Kevin and see what the best way to go with that. This is knocking down that garage, it's they're existing. And then building like a thirty by forty. Uh, garage, not like a huge oval, but something. You know, a little bit of powder that I could utilize and.
I I did have a question. That little confusion, our part, you own most parcels? You're just buying a piece that's gonna be subdivided off.
Buying a piece that's given away. So I don't own that over there.
So Belinda still owns the whole, yes, so what I'm doing is.
And why isn't she subdivided? As the owner.
It was an agreement that we had to, um. Go ahead and step in and ask and stuff like that.
Okay, so you're really representing her, sort of?
I got a lot of that order with the neck. Actually, it's like we just.
Kevin.
Yeah, go ahead.
Since he doesn't own the land yet. Is this be representing Belinda or what?
Yeah, I mean, that's technically he's representing Belinda, because Belinda's the property owner. And then you probably, our attorney would tell you just to get something signed by Belinda before final. So along with, I I would say just get a signature block on the uh. You know what you normally sign? Get something signed on there by Belinda's or get a letter saying that she's okay with the subdivision before the final.
I'm ready to let everything ground up by the word. Everything was saying, but there's something further and he sounds not fine.
Okay, Kevin, it doesn't sound like you have that paperwork.
I just don't have the sign, I don't think I have anything signed saying, hey, we're okay with this. So just get whatever it is, just hand it in before final with the subdivision plat, the Mylar. If if it gets approved, sorry, not implying anything, if it got approved, just have that before the Mylar is signed, and that way everything is up and up.
That's why I'm here is to, you know, before it's been thousands and we have, we're writing everything. Having surveyed and everything else, I'm gonna make sure. Can I do it? And that's, that's what I'm hoping for tonight and I can move forward with this.
Right.
So do you need, if you put a building, do you need DEC?
Nah, we need just one issue. If I'm moving it over, then I'm I'm approaching on what means.
Right.
To their point, I don't believe, I mean, they're always the heads up, you know, but obviously, they take this what they want. So who knows what the market is? Um, I believe it is a J C trust.
They have control over all that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So for the least credit of me. Is what I'm going about it right now is doing at that, I mean.
And then the subdivided lot, is there a plan for that?
Uh, I mean, it's.
No.
No?
Oh, run east and west, the larger lot will be.
Oh, right, 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 west.
So is there a development plan for that, that lot?
Oh, that we all made with the.
And I see, okay. So we're just talking about subdividing the lot that he's purchased?
Yes.
Which is which is that one section?
Right, okay.
And then if they're not put this on the property. Before, because if not, then it's gonna be useless to.
Now, have you? Guess the figures, uh, how far? Bar be the new property, Bob?
Yes. I had it all written up, do you have that?
Is that the forty feet?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a forty feet, I thought that was the length of the size.
Oh, bug. It's an open. Looks like. Is it twenty six?
I think it's the twenty six.
Is there a twenty six there?
Yeah, there's.
There's uh, one you.
Yeah, it should be twenty six from this line here. And then it should be forty seven from here to here. This is your middle bit here, which is ninety nine. So yes, from that property, it's gonna be twenty six feet. From her property, once it's split it. Split, and then it's gonna be at the end, approximately from the end of the property when buying. Over is forty seven feet. And then if you take off the center of the road. To the front of the uh, building will be ninety nine. So I'm more, um, than enough and. You know. Well, I'm spoiled, what I need.
Are you gonna handle her access to your property to her trail, your driveway?
Yeah, we're gonna kind of keep it as the same.
Just give them a bit of traction, ease them up, yeah. And then we're loading the next flash of the owner to the east. You're gonna move the stuff you've got there and what?
Oh.
You're gonna move all that stuff you've got around your place down there here?
I wanna get, well, I wanna get stuff inside.
Yeah.
Um, so I I kinda wanna get stuff where I can store. And obviously, you guys know I don't have much room over there.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm kinda stuck and that's why I'm looking to to do this.
Does that maybe doesn't work, black subway sidewalk?
You hear what happened to that bike, right? Did you hear what happened to that bike?
No.
You didn't hear that? So I pulled up on the on the sidewalk, right in front of the garage. And I got hooked on the corner, punched it between the corner. Took the bike number and lost.
What was that?
Last year, worst problem was that.
But if the bike wasn't there, it was driven through the bathroom.
Yeah.
Pretty bike.
Was.
Nothing. Yes, I guess, a little bit, did you consider our hurdles, place?
No more than what I wanna spend.
Pardon?
It's well more than what I wanna spend.
Yeah, there was an idea, there would have been.
Perfect.
This is open for public comments, we're open to public comment at this time. We'll start with the people here, Mark, Bruce. Comments? Well, yeah, we gotta give everybody a chance. All right, on Zoom, if you wish to make a comment, please unmute yourself and do so. All right. You wanna say what nobody wants to make comment at? Board members. Uh. Right now, we're only talking about the subdivision. Uh, any other questions about the subdivision?
This would create a. Full sized lot and then some.
Yes.
So some undersized lot that's being created.
And what we have an undersized lot. Once you both had sort of use of the property. DEC was out that. But there's enough there, it's.
So the application discusses an undersized lot, is that not accurate then? The application just mentions an undersized lot?
No.
Does not?
Full sized lot, it's just.
Okay.
Was it, did it have a hundred feet of road frontage?
No. Yes, no, that's why.
Yeah, I think it's under the road frontage that it required, I thought, I'm gonna look it up.
I think you're right.
Because that's, I think, why it was an undersized lot, it had the acreage requirement, even though some of those wetland had the acreage, but it didn't have road frontage, right? Or maybe it didn't have either.
There's no question, we got plenty of land there.
Yeah, it's ninety by one sixty five, which makes it an undersized lot.
Not shaped then.
A lot of that property will be taken away unless you're per. Okay, uh, any questions on the subdivision? Anybody wanna make a motion? Remember, this is preliminary there. We'll need uh. Those documents to Kevin, need a staff survey.
It'll need to go to zoning too.
Yeah.
So does he need those stamp, or he should have whatever documentation he already has to you?
To go to zoning, yep.
Right.
Now, so go ahead with the um, survey. So should I go ahead with this?
Does he need the survey then too?
Um, probably, I mean, we, zoning is fine with what he has so far, I just need that sign thing from Belinda to say it's okay.
Uh, I'll, I'll make the motion to refer this. The subdivision of. Eighty two seventy eight Lake Road. Into two. Lots. Uh. With the dimensions, the one lot being a hundred by a hundred and sixty five. And the second lot being. Substandard, uh, at ninety feet by a hundred and sixty five.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Art subdivision being set, now we need to talk about the bar. We've talked about the bar a lot, but. It has to be two.
Gotcha, understood.
Okay. Firstly, I think the. Bar that you uh. Had a picture out there, it was good looking.
Would you have it on anyone as well? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what I can talk, uh, jobs and stuff.
And, and that is thirty by forty?
Yes.
And is the existing footprint that you're putting on? Thirty by forty also?
No, it's a little smaller, so it's still a smaller, so it leaves coming power color.
Okay.
Which those measurements is what I'll be putting. So that measurements is now by the existing one. The measurements guy did is for. So the front one, it is a measurement.
You can see, he drew a little map, so it's it's much bigger than what's there.
Right now. But you're steering the rear of any of them.
Doesn't exceed out past theirs, so. You know?
Yeah.
It's not gonna exceed out past those, it's still.
Right, but it's, it's a bigger build.
Yeah. Yeah.
But you're able to steer clear of the catches.
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, the dimensions are listed as thirty by forty by twelve. What's a twelve?
To the top of the rafters and the top of the peak. So.
It's not the walls.
Yeah.
Not the walls, but not the height of the peak.
No.
That's not the height, height of the peak, no. It'll be. Eighteen? Yeah. We'll need them so as exact.
At some. I can do that.
Next time we're in.
Yeah, need the plans.
Yeah.
Well, this is, I wanted to, you know, to play one for you and everything, I just wanted to make sure. So that you don't want to get them to do them on.
This would not need to go to zoning then, would it?
No.
Okay.
But. If. He's gonna need you to delay, he has to come back anyway.
Right, okay.
Because if they didn't okay the. Subdivide, then.
Right. It worked. Or no work, but assuming the sub, the subdivide, subdivision is approved.
Then.
Then he's free to go.
Probably back here in two weeks.
Okay.
Maybe. Maybe. So we need to talk about fully. Right, Jared, our next meeting, she had a point with us.
So just to be clear, we have no D E C involved?
No, I, I, I was getting, I did have them come out. They didn't mark all the weapons for me. Um. So they took a test. But they did, uh, flag it, turn it was at the word that it's. Um, and so that one, it was quite a bit. I thought I wanna look at more, but what I believe.
Uh.
Um, but so by doing it that way, it's active, just because I was gonna put it off to the side of.
Have you considered elevating the pad?
Yes.
Just in case we have another one of those questions.
Yeah.
That where it was.
Uh, yeah. No, no.
Just be a stone floor.
Um. We're not.
Maybe one.
The truck, definitely.
Yeah.
We're not, we're just gonna, um, did it out, it's not on it. Put that in, but, uh, talk to them.
Uh, power, running power from the side.
Y two, and I got the, we got the power, the jump power and everything with that, I can just.
So I have all of that.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. So we have a little bunch of what we call. On its own, you know?
We do, not here.
Not sure yet. You know, it's not starting off yet, you don't have anything right now.
We're sticklers on doors and windows.
Mm-hmm.
Better doors and windows besides the big door.
Yeah, I'm gonna have a entry door while that, oh, yeah. You have to have a couple windows and stuff.
Right, uh, we, we do request that there. Uh, man door on the opposite end from the overhead door, so that if there were a fire. If you're behind the fire.
So you're aligned towards the back, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Or a second door, just to look.
Or, or at least a next escape window. You know, you, you, you need a way to get out if you've got.
I can always put one towards your back.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I can put one here, and then I can just put one in the back.
Just keep a lot, just. Yeah. Make it a solid door.
Yeah.
Or a escape window.
Yeah.
Whatever it's.
Doors are easy to lock.
Sorry, in advance for the fire whistle. It's gonna go off in a second.
Pardon? Fire whistle.
Fire whistle's about to go off, sorry.
Well, let's make a motion.
All right. Uh, go.
How did he know that? He doesn't. He's on the. Bruce, you should have had a comment to this one, too. I didn't, yes.
You know, I'm enjoying the cool weather, but I've got a sinus headache.
Sinus, that thing with it.
Hmm?
Sinus, that thing with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Ellen's not here, she's got a vibrating. Our old crowd members.
Okay, with that. Big, big. So, what would you add those of that parcel of big? Um. Too many.
We'll discover all the, all the, all the.
What was that?
The eighty to eighty, if the numbers go up to the.
Long, long, right?
They're looking at the other side, it's longer, it goes down.
Now, it's just, because this plan, I've got two year. Property on the floor.
Um, it goes, I think there's a, there's a little black one, I shouldn't wear it. Yeah, there's a little of that, because man jogs going down, and then you. Kind of slants a little bit. Um, I don't mean very fast.
No, sorry.
You know, but now it doesn't, uh, uh. Folks, yeah.
All right. Now, we're gonna open this up for public comment. We'll start with the people in the room.
So based on what they, how they maintain their property, you know what he does is gonna be quality, right? That's for sure.
So, what was he doing? Park. The sidewalk.
It'll be nice to get some of this.
You haven't seen that corner. You haven't seen a park there, are you, Eddie?
I haven't seen the bike for a while, but there was a golf cart there a couple times.
There was. And we got, and then that, that kind of got them. Speaking of that, what's going on?
So, all right, no comments, other than Bruce, how about you? Okay, you're good. All right. If you're on Zoom and wish to make a comment, please unmute yourself and do so. Hearing no comments, we'll close public comment, and now we're gonna take a motion.
I move that we provide preliminary approval. For the construction of a thirty-foot by forty-foot by approximately. Eighteen-foot pole barn. On the eastern portion of a, of the property to be subdivided. And of, of eighty-two seventy-eight Lake Road. Subject to the ultimate approval of that subdivision.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Back, those opposed? Hear your opposition, it's passed, uh. You don't have to go to zoning, uh. The building, but you will see that next week, uh, for the subdivision.
That's your comeback next week.
Yep.
And that you need that written, that sounds like a.
Yeah, just the written thing that you've done with Belinda.
Okay, I'll get the copy to you, um, this week.
Make sure the lawyers.
Okay.
He used it.
All right, thank you, guys.
Okay.
Okay. All right. We're to, uh, sure, Montez, uh, eighty-one thirty-seven Bayless subdivision. Would you like to, uh, present your project, please?
Yes, hi, my name is Chris. Uh, I bought the property that was formerly known as Blueberry Knoll, eighty-one thirty-seven Bayless in March. And I'm looking to subdivide the property to either build another residential unit or a couple of cabins, depending on what zoning. Uh, and code enforcement allows. I've been in touch with Kevin about the different ideas and what would be feasible. And I know that there will be some sort of D E C approval that we needed. Um, but I'm doing the first step of trying to get the land subdivided first.
I'm assuming the D E C part is from the top of the bank, back to the stream?
Yes, where the property abouts First Creek, uh, there probably some wetland area. Um, my neighbor behind me, it looks like his property goes pretty much all the way to the water. It's like mowed all the way down, so I don't know how much of wetlands is there that will come up and encroach, but. We'll definitely make sure that we go through all the proper procedures for that.
But you'd still have plenty of depth there. Yeah, um. Yeah, I'm sorry I started with your renters, but I. 打开了 door, and see for other, uh, western.
You just warned them.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I, I thought you were gonna call first. I would've told you to go to the smaller apartment.
Your renter told me he was in favor.
He probably wanted to buy it.
There you go. Uh, uh. It's fairly straightforward, you got a hundred-foot frontage. And depending on the side. Well, over three hundred foot. Uh, you said you're looking to build on that?
Yes.
That'll be a whole one. That's a whole other issue.
Yep. Yeah.
I have no question.
I don't have any questions either. Looks pretty straightforward.
Same here.
All right. We'll open this for public comment again. Starting with. All right, uh, anybody on Zoom wish to make a comment? Okay, hearing none, we'll close public comment. So. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I move that we provide preliminary approval for the subdivision of eighty-one thirty-seven Bayless. Road, this road. Uh, to. Create a one hundred by approximately five hundred and thirty-six foot lot from the original. Uh. Property as. Uh. depicted in the, uh, survey map.
There are seconds.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Hear no opposition, it is passed. Okay, uh, you'll be headed to zoning next week. And hopefully, we'll see you back here in a couple. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I will, I'll send the plans to the surveyor next. Is that the next step for me?
Zoning, yeah. Uh, they have to prove.
Yeah, I think you wanna get zoning approval before you bring in the survey and start paying money.
No, this one doesn't take, this one's a full-size lot.
It's not going to zoning, is it?
No, it doesn't need zoning approval. It's a full-size lot, so it just, it just can go to the surveyor now.
It's.
Once, once it gets the Mylar with the title, uh, signature block from Planning Board Chair, it can come back.
Okay. Okay, thanks. All right, so we'll see you back in a few weeks.
Okay, so I don't need to come to the zoning meeting? I'm, I'm already approved with zoning?
My mistake.
Yep, you're, you have a full-sized, uh, application. It's a full-size lot, so you're good.
Okay, fantastic, so then I'll send it to the surveyor. Uh, do I need to get something from you guys to send to the surveyor? I can come by town tomorrow?
Just what you submitted is what you need. That's it.
Okay, oh, just the same, the same, uh, form, the subdivided.
Yep.
Lot. Okay, great.
All right, Mr. Carey. Step on up.
Thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you, Chris, thank you.
So has everybody seen this?
Yep.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Well, I think it's a interesting, uh, concept. I did have a few questions, uh. First. What are you doing with the house?
I'm tearing it down because it's historic, and I don't like historic shit.
I figured that.
So. The barn's being fixed. It's a two-story barn.
Yeah.
Without a floor. And I'm thinking that could probably end up being two spaces for people. And somewhere's either in here or back behind this house, I wanna put a couple of gang bathrooms for. The public. I'm thinking this house, the way it's offset would be, I mean, I, here's what I've been doing. Anybody that has a business here or in sodas gets first dibs on. You know, potentially what they wanna try to do here. That's number one. Number two is. These sheds, which the, the siding, my daughter wants it to look like Cape Cod, which shakes on the front, so it's not this linear stuff, but. And I like turn of the century, which is novelty siding, so that battles, you have to be one. But the way this works is I put the first one up, the barn would be ready for whatever. The house will be ready. I'm gonna rip these old porches off and put one great big porch on there. This thing here that shows coming out in front of the house, that would be the very last thing, whatever happened, because I'm gonna put a nice. Courtyard in here, probably with a fountain. The Bruce Carey touch, as I call it. And, you know, it's just not gonna be a fast thing, because. If, if you let the wrong people in, then you've wrecked the whole. You know, like I can see a breakfast lunch place here, I can see a, a sauna here, not a sauna, what do you call them things, spas? But who knows what's gonna come?
Some sort of retail.
Hopefully, little. No junk. Years ago, when I owned my Admiral's Cove Marine over there, during a summer when the boats were all out of the big buildings, I did a flea market. And they took two dumpsters, you get all their shit out of there, after I figured out that's not gonna work, so it, it's not gonna be anything like that. Or it could just sit there and look pretty. You know?
Um, so your, your intention to make the new structure seasonal, but if somebody were to locate in the house.
Right, the house of the barn, correct?
Those would be your rent.
And the barn could be, yep. Actually, these, these could be, you know, all you have to really do is insulate them, and, but, I, I don't see it that way. First of all, you have to, anybody's gonna do this, you're gonna have to nurture them. Alright, I'm saying at the most, you've got eight months. So, you have to baby them, like, one guy wants to put a little arcade in there. And he says, well, could I get the first year free? I said, well, you can't have a whole year free, but, you know, that's what you're gonna have to do to get people to invest in their space. Uh, Martha up the road, she knows all kinds of artists, so maybe they'd like to come in. And the reason this is all open is because maybe they'll be sixteen foot wide with a four-foot cement walkway. So maybe somebody wants twenty by sixty, sixteen. We're gonna put these walls in, so if they don't make it, or somebody wants bigger, we can move those walls and give them whatever they want. So it's not gonna look like these doors, it's gonna look old-fashioned with one, each base will have one mutton bar old-fashioned window and one old-fashioned door.
You keep it to fire, isn't it?
That guy won Bruce Carey lottery, okay? So I bought his house. I bought a house on Centella Street. And I'm giving him life use of that house, for him and that boy that's been misused for you, Steve.
Wow.
Plus some storage space, so he won the lottery. So, you know, the truck will be gone, I mean, it's.
Bruce, how many, uh, retail space do you include?
So. He's got this by square feet, um, so this would be a little over a hundred. So if you did twenty by sixteen, which would be three hundred and twenty, you'd have five, so you could say five, ten to twenty maybe, again, it depends on how much space somebody wants. If you notice down at Hotspine, what, uh, Josh did there, he took a, well, he proved it, I was here that night, a garden shed, and it works out perfect for the merch that you're selling. So again, all he thinks.
Fifteen to twenty works good for this project.
I, I would guess, like I said, besides you've got a good two spaces in the, uh, house, which is two-story, and this old barn is actually two-story.
Farmer's market?
Can't see it.
No.
I can't see the, uh, any advantage.
The, over sodas.
Pardon?
Over the sodas was the problem.
Uh, remember, remember, anybody sells anything here, they gotta pay sales tax.
Right.
Okay, they're not getting in here without sales tax, remember, if I have to pay, you have to pay, you know what I mean?
Sure.
But again, a portion of that does come back to the village, so. And we know we need shopping, because there, there isn't any shopping. Everybody doesn't come down here. Uh, like the fishermen might bring their wives and they stay at a place, and they like to shop or have something to do.
So you envision the, the facade of each of the buildings to be relatively consistent? You don't anticipate, like, garage overhead doors, open up a hole?
No.
Okay.
No, but, again, you get to hang your sign over, like you would in the old days, you know? I'll provide the bracket and everything, and then you can put your sign up, so when you're walking down here, you see all that. Uh, nice stuff. Yeah, I mean, they're gonna have to comply with things to keep it quality, but they're not gonna be paying quality rents, so.
Well, this is just a sketch plan, so, I, firstly, I think it's a good idea, I encourage you to, uh, come back with a preliminary, uh, you know, we have a much better bay than, uh, some of them down here, but, uh, what we don't have, uh, is the, uh, shopping.
You know, we don't have a main street left.
We, we, yeah, true, we don't have the main street. Uh, we don't have a lot of things, but, uh.
Bruce, if I can. Oops, sorry, I don't, yeah, sorry, go on.
Jump in.
I was gonna say, if I can interject too, um, speaking with Matthew, if you guys want, you can take two roads here. You can have Bruce come back with, um, a little bit more robust drawings for like the shop, uh, the buildings, just to give you a better idea, and then you could forward recommendations to the zoning board for the special use, and then do preliminary site plan with a little bit more site plan drawing.
Today?
Or if you guys want.
There are no more drawings for shit. It's that by however long it is. So what?
If you think you have enough right now.
Pardon?
Yeah, if, if you think you have enough right now for the site, uh, special use permit, you can give your recommendations to the zoning board, so they act on the special use permit portion for you. That was what I was gonna say next. You have two roads you can go down.
I was under the impression this is just, um, a pre.
Sketch conversation, yep, yeah, so that's why I'm, I'm just offering, 'cause I just checked with Matt Say Martin to see which, which road you guys wanted to go, so totally up to you whichever you wanna do and what you wanna do. Um, no, I don't think it slows anything down for, for Bruce either way. I, I don't think something's gonna happen tomorrow. Uh, I, I don't know, I don't wanna speak for him.
I do have one question on parking. You have, uh, fifteen spaces back here, is that for the public parking or for a shop?
No, the shop people are gonna park right over here, where they can park on my lot that I have on Fitchu Street, but no, it's not for the help. They come in the morning and with your provisions. But I'm not gonna let people park here all day, either. You know what I mean? They're gonna get maybe a two-hour parking, or we'll pick your car up at Featherly's, 'cause there's always Ed, isn't there?
So during the special use permit, the zoning board would have to review, just like when we go through and say, okay, there might be ten or twelve retail shops, we, we would just do a, a special permit to calculate some of the parking with, uh, public parking.
So, so when would a preliminary planning board look at it or do they?
Um, you, you would, just 'cause the, uh, the cost of the sheds would be over ten thousand, so we would just do a preliminary and final site plan. Um, so it's up to the board when you feel you have enough information for that action. So if you don't think you have enough right now, you would just tell him what you'd need to make that action.
Well, if we were to decide we had that, we wouldn't have proper notice, right? Notification.
Um. Did I lose you? Am I, am I still?
Yeah, we have it.
Okay, um, I put it down, I think, just for the special use permit tonight, so, um, that's all I put it down for. So it would be one extra meeting for, um, for Bruce, is what you'd be looking at. So tonight I put it down for sketch site plan, and then, um, special use permit, I believe is what I have it in, in your notice as, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I just have it as sketch, so if you felt you needed some more information, or if, uh, direction you could give him, or if you think he has enough, he would just return and with the same information and whatever zoning has him do.
I think it'd be helpful, you know, you should and your daughter work out your conflict on a, those buildings are gonna look, uh, that we have a better sense of what they're gonna look like, okay? I like what you've got planned. Particularly with the overhanging, uh, lights and, and, uh, the door, doorways instead of the, the garage door look. Uh, I like that a lot.
Yeah, and you could even open it up as a Christmas village.
Well, yeah, you can, there's a lot of things you can do.
Uh, you said there's a four-foot walkway in front of all of the buildings, uh, or in front of each of the shops, okay? How is that gonna be accommodated on the, uh, on the access to the parking area? Same thing? Part of that twenty-six feet is gonna be?
That's right, four feet will be the walkway.
Four feet there as well?
Yeah.
Okay, and are you gonna build the buildings and stages? Are you gonna try to?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
But I'm gonna pour, remember, there's, there's site work, there's storm drains and everything had to be done. So the beginning is, is Tom's trying to get all his shit out of there. Uh, then we can put the site out there, finishing the cives and get the parking lot and the roadway and that stuff in, and get the slabs poured, like I said, all but these here, the edge of the house, they gotta stop, 'cause these may never go in.
Yeah.
Like, 'cause I, I'm gonna, beautiful courtyard in here, anyways.
Bruce, uh, Bruce Ebner, if, if you thought it was, uh, Chair Bruce, if you thought it was just a sketch tonight and you didn't have it, like if I misportrayed it, uh, I don't wanna rush you if you wanna take time to make conditions or something to get to the zoning board.
Uh, I, I don't, I don't know what a sketch is. This is a.
Uh, yeah, no, so I, I don't know if I misportrayed it to Bruce Ebner and made it sound like tonight was just a preliminary discussion, and then you would return with, uh, more? So I didn't know if Bruce, Chair Bruce, uh, uh, didn't have time to, to kinda come up with conditions and stuff. So I don't wanna rush the planning board, is all.
Kind of in agreement with Mr. Kedley about having a more definite design.
Yeah, there's not a lot, but, uh, I, I think a little more be.
Nice, what I'll, what I'll do is I'll get pictures, so you know what Cape Cod cedar shakes are and what novelty siding is, and that should suffice, right? Because you can look, that's vertical. Gosh, he skipped us. The one I did showed novelty, doesn't matter, no big deal. I just, I gotta remind you one thing. All this site work has to be done before the bad weather, or it's gonna be another year before it can even be started, so. Uh, again, I closed on it, and then I had to find a place to put him, so I had to buy that place, so, you know.
So, uh, are you thinking metal, composite, wood?
For what?
For the framing.
You know I do metal stud framing, right? On these big buildings, I don't know, one or the other.
Yep.
Probably metal studs, since that's our world.
Yeah. Okay, um, and so you, the, the outline that you submitted to us really talks about it all being seasonal, but it's really not necessarily a hundred percent seasonal.
No, absolutely not, because these buildings.
Right.
Are real buildings.
Yeah.
It's where these are exactly what you see.
So I think it'd be helpful to, yeah.
Not to demean them, but.
Are, are any of them gonna have sewer, into those shops?
So sewers here, and then as I said, I'm gonna put in.
Right.
Gang bathrooms.
Right.
But if somebody wants to make enough investment that they wanna sink or whatever in one of their things, we, we can do that too. That's why I don't wanna build them all, get all the slabs poured, and then somebody comes in, geez, I need a sink for this, whatever. So, yeah.
Uh, wouldn't it be helpful to see where, like, the bathrooms are gonna be on the, um, dimensions?
Yeah, taking off the porches and, uh, you know, dusting up the front, yeah, thank.
Dimensions for the sidewalk and the, the sheds on the, on the plot. It's, uh, would be helpful.
So I, I gotta be honest with you, as we sit here right now, I don't know where the bathrooms are going. There's already bathrooms in this house. I can only tell you that before it's over with, there's gonna be a set of public gang bathrooms. So I'll put them anywhere you want, but if I don't put them there, don't come back and say, hey, you said you were putting them over here. You know, this is kinda like a fluid, this, this project.
Have you thought about having a common area where people can maybe sit and eat their ice cream cone or have?
It's a, it's a courtyard here.
Well, under shelter.
No.
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 So it's sort of like a food court. So think about just to have it, so that we know that there's gonna be some kind of bathroom facility on the property. Outside the main house. Put it wherever you want.
Okay.
But show that it's going to be.
Okay.
Be there, and maybe it makes sense if you're gonna encourage people to use that courtyard to have it in that proximity. You know, that's all we're asked, just.
Bruce, you used the word light commercial uses, uses. What do you think?
What is light commercial?
I don't know, what is light?
Light commercial, maybe a, uh, uh, like I said, a spa, maybe a little diner, uh, it's light commercial to me.
Air stylus.
Yeah, any of that kind of stuff.
Commercial.
Art gallery.
Yeah, I didn't name it Coral with retail, 'cause details.
Well, it's still, it's some of the same thing, I mean, it's, you know, retail is commercial, it's light commercial. Just like in a mall, that's light commercial, it's still retail.
Alright, alright. So does, does Ford need to take any action today?
Or asking him to come back?
No, no, I don't need to take any actions, other than with that, I would like to set a date for a, another meeting other than Labor Day. That way we can tell Mr. Carey when he would be around on Wednesday afternoon.
I will not.
That would be the third.
No. Is it?
Yeah. Looks like calendar fears.
Almost. Yeah. I have the other commissions.
Do you guys have the second free, September second free?
Yes.
Bruce, do you have the second free?
Any of those days work for you guys?
I have the second. And then I'm out of town for the eighteenth.
I'll go and handle those for you.
Yeah.
Bill, Bill?
Yes, second.
For the second.
Second.
Yeah, I mean, I think so.
Alright, set it for the second.
Are you around this?
He'll be around.
If I'm not around, it'll never get done. Alright, just clear, you wanna see a bathroom, men's room and women's room, you wanna see the four-foot walkway, and you wanna see the siding?
And we wanna see actual dimensions of, you know, when you got square footage.
Okay, so.
Uh, uh, the drawings enlist the square footage of the, oh, sheds, but it doesn't give us what dimensions.
Here, here, Bruce. 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 There's a side view of these sheds, sixteen feet, okay? This is eighteen hundred square feet, so if you divide in to get eighteen hundred square feet, you'll see it's about, I don't know, a hundred, little over a hundred feet long. That, that has nothing to do with what size the spaces that are gonna be there. That all has to do with the people that come.
Yeah, so.
It's what, sixteen feet?
Yeah, but we don't have it on the map. Okay. So give us a dimension for that.
Well, hold on, that's because you don't have, Kevin?
Yeah.
What'd you do with that thing I mailed in from Costage that shows a section of the face in the, the end of the building? They don't have that here.
That's what, the only thing I have is what you texted me.
I sent it to your email and I sent you a text telling you that I sent it.
This is what you're talking about?
That's it.
And then I just, is it, is that, do you have the right thing?
Bruce? What we're saying is, alright, we've got, this looks at the whole project, not just the building.
Right.
You know, what are the dimensions for that? What are the dimensions?
Right here, it's sixteen feet.
Understood, I don't see it on the map. On the, on the site plan, okay, got me?
Gotcha.
And so same with the walkway.
Yeah, gotcha.
Mark, Mark, give that evidence.
Bruce, do you, Bruce Ebner, do you have what Bruce Carey was talking about?
We've got it.
Okay, alright, so I sent it to you?
And we're talking, yes.
And we're talking yes. Yes, yes, you did, Kevin.
Alright.
Alright, so. We'll be here on the second, Kevin, um. So.
So just for, just for clarity, so we're all on the same page, so the second. You guys want me to schedule for site plan and special use permit review, both?
Yep.
Okay, and then, um, assumably, I'll schedule then for zoning. Uh, you know, I'm not assuming any, any approvals, anything, just I'm gonna say the eighth and then the fifteenth for, so. The map would go two, eight, fifteen, Bruce would be your, your progress forward.
Sounds good.
Alright, call Kostic tomorrow, get these dimensions stuff that these folks need. Get them back so they get them and I'll see everybody on the second.
Oh.
In the meantime, I'm gonna leave this up here in case any people from the public are interested or, you know what I mean?
I, I will tell you, I've had a lot of people ask about it.
Good, well now I got something to see, right, at least.
Alright.
Alright, thank you, everybody.
Good.
Thanks, Bruce.
Oh, thank you. When am I gonna see your doc?
See the what?
Your peer and.
So Kevin.
Yeah.
Bruce just asked about the doc, where's the doc at? Man LaRue's?
Yeah, McMahon LaRue, uh, Brian has all the forms, Brian White. And he's gotta make a trip up here to meet me and him and I are doing two things at once, we're killing two birds with one stone. So that's supposed to happen, uh, this week or next week.
So you want me to kick him in the ass like the last time or no?
No, I, I've been, I've been pushing him because I have a meeting with the DEC at the beginning of September. And uh, he has to get up here for me for my other project and your project before the beginning of September.
Like I told him the last time, it did park, they built the Empire State Building in one year, how long can it take to do this shit?
The DEC can drag their feet a really long time.
Cause they don't have enough, I don't know, people to deal with all the problems.
If, if you want to though, yeah, you, I mean, you can do whatever you want, you can kick him in the butt, he'll just, he'll probably blame it on me. But he's supposed to be coming up this week or next, I have uh, Brian Mankillo coming up on Friday. I've got a board meeting Thursday, so I'm, I'm tight uh, right now for scheduling, so I'm gonna try and meet with him Wednesday or uh, or next week, really.
Guys, did you get a map?
Yeah.
So you know what's going.
What do you got up there?
Did you get a map?
No, the, the pier, the pier map, he's asking.
Got it.
They, it's sitting next door, they, I, I believe I showed you guys the pier, haven't I?
Nah.
I think they can have it, it's not top secret, right?
No, it's not, once it's in my office, it's public record.
Alright, so let me ask everybody a question, you never did. Say anything about the RV park, did it live up to your expectations?
I.
Yes, no?
On the uh, plants deep in.
Pardon?
You had trees showing up here.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not blocking what you would trees. I got trees down at Obover, I own that.
On your plan, you had a few trees scattered in there.
Okay, so if I plant a big tree and you're back there and you can't see the water, what would you rather have, the water or the tree?
But it's hot like it's been?
No, these people come prepared, they got air conditioning. I'm just, I'm being honest with you, the whole idea of that site was to taper to the water so everybody can see the water.
I know what you're saying.
And you know what happens ten years after you plant a big tree, especially the size I start with, well, you see nothing, but a tree. Better think of that and I'll meet you there anytime to go over your recommendations.
Alright.
Other than that, is it okay, was it good?
Are you pleased with the uh?
Turnout, turnout?
Yeah, I don't know, because they manage it for me, I'll tell you when I.
Alright, are they?
I know one thing that people tell me to do that face thing, that people say wonderful things about their experience, so.
Yeah.
You know, that's important.
So who manages?
The uh.
Rena?
Maxons, Rena, their help, and they do a wonderful job.
Alright.
They improve them?
I like the way you accept the buildings. We're going, some, what some's gotta have in those buildings, they're all done inside, that's stupidly outside. I told them, figure out what you wanna do, those condos.
Yeah.
Oh, Jesus Christ, good thing you didn't.
Are the buildings sanctioning the way you uh, had anticipated, Bruce?
Which ones?
At the RV park.
So we don't use them?
You don't use them?
Not at all.
Cause you're originally anticipating a laundromat and uh.
Nope, the laundromat's in, that's in the front, and the two gang bathrooms are, they're just stunning. You know, it's all glass and.
Not being used?
Yeah, they use them.
Oh.
Oh.
But the buildings themselves, you got three large condos, all in separate from those garages, that nothing's happening.
So where's the showers in the, in the, is that in the garages or in the building?
It's in the, it's in the, in the buildings that face the mall house.
Right.
In the garages, you'll see two doors.
So just the garages are utilized?
Yeah. Sad, but.
Yeah, it is.
I don't know, maybe somebody will come along, I'm onto the next thing as you can see, I'm building a street of shops. Because I gotta wait for all the paperwork and shit for the doc, but that pier. I'm telling you, this village, you look back when I was in the planning board, we showed a pier, now Jimmy Hinesworth uses it for docks. It was at the end of Ontario Street. But this one will be a good one, because you got the Lotus being done, you got that. Other thing that's over there across the bay. They pull and let people off, we don't need parking for that. You know, and if anybody told you, there was over four hundred participants in the five K race this year. Over double what it's ever been, where do you park? The same everybody, where do you park, they park, there were no traffic jams or anything.
They found space.
Found a space, yeah.
Mine hasn't been weak, but we found a space.
You know, I don't, yeah, but I don't think it was that bad, you know, I was amazed. It, I didn't know it was that many, but it took them forever to go by my house, there were so many people. And then I found out it was uh, four hundred and something. That's a goodie, that, okay. Thank you, bye, see you, Mark, thank you, Bruce.
Uh, last thing was to, they start looking at uh. The updates on the zoning. Uh, he got three, uh, the first three articles with zoning. Uh, I don't expect to get all three done today, but I'd like to at least get article one looked at.
Okay, so my question is, cause last time, we understood that. We weren't crazy, offer any input till they had it done. Are we looking at something that's been done?
Uh, the first three have gone through uh, zoning. And ready for us to look at.
Okay, so.
First three being.
I don't wanna waste time.
Okay.
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah, first one is, I think, purpose and intent, second one is definition, and then third is the use, and they just started density, they haven't finished density yet. So they just finished the first, um, they flagged stuff in. Definitions that I have to go back and figure out why they're there, they changed the LCR mostly. Uh, in the use chart, and they wanted your guys' opinion on it because in chapter. Or article three, LCR is generally low impact, but then in the use chart. Um, there was a lot of stuff that was permitted that wasn't low impact, so they didn't understand why it wasn't driving. So they changed a lot of things to special use permit.
Well, okay.
I've gotta step away for about five minutes and I'll be right back.
Uh, well, sorry. Got through this, you've got to do any of it.
I'm anxious to get to article three. But everything's.
Yeah, everything, yeah, that, I.
There was one that I. Uh. Definition that. I think is pretty dated.
That's got a building?
Something.
Building?
Building, uh. The current one is any structure which is permanently affixed to the land as one or more floors and a roof. And is intended to shelter housing or those sort of persons, animals or cattle. I, I think we're moving past. And using. A planner's dictionary, which Kevin has told me is kinda like the bible for planners. On page ninety-one on your building, I found one that I think is a little more current. Uh, it defines a building as a structure enclosed within. Exterior walls built erected in frame of a combination of materials whether. Portable or fixed, having a roof to form the structure for the shelter of persons, animals or property. Uh, we've run into situations, uh, that. One of them was down here on uh, Great Street, gentleman. Expected his neighbor to allow him to use three foot of his property because he put a. Portable shed on the side of his house, so he couldn't get.
Right.
Along the side of his house, so he expected his neighbor to give him three foot to work on.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, I noticed there are more of these uh. Plastic sheds, you can get it closed or Home Depot, go and add. They're not affixed to the ground, they sit.
Yeah, so they're portable.
Uh huh. And. The current one, it, they have, it's permanently fixed to the land. So I look down here at the uh, north parking lot, there's that. Shed down there with a deck on top, it's on skids. That's not permanently fixed to the land, so that went up. It might, might be a building. Under this definition.
Yeah.
I, I think definition.
Looks like a building.
It looks like, no.
Functions like a bill.
What was he about ducks?
Yeah, right.
Yeah. And there's probably a different in the tax, if it's movable, it's taxed differently than.
Probably.
It is. Why not? Why I move the wheels on trailer? And trailer. Right?
So, you know, I don't know, I'm, I'm asking you guys to uh, think about that.
But the banks won't land.
Read the definition again.
Uh, definition I liked, uh, I know you got a copy, it's on page ninety-one.
Correct.
A structure enclosed within exterior walls built erected in frame of a. Combination of materials whether portable or fixed, having a roof to form a structure. For the shoulder of persons, animals or property.
Yep, so the key change is portable.
Right. You know.
No cattle were allowed, no.
My, my daughter's got.
Well, things. Animals, and I know.
But, you know.
You can.
Over on. With them, there's a property that we visited in the passing of foot screen up uh, to. Between them and uh, Vivian.
Hmm.
And they have an outside. Yeah, showing.
Yeah, yes. So now we'll figure into Kevin's uh, calculations of the coverage. Too. What you should.
Put a, a, a movable shed, it's coverage too now, isn't it?
Well.
Yeah.
My daughter's got.
I don't know.
It's society, this big area. You know, it, it's big. But it's not affixed to the ground, it sits.
On the ground.
Sits.
Like no sheds did.
It's using its weight. Well, not, not that I have anything against my daughter.
But, but sheds are currently considered part of coverage, are they not? And as our driveway?
They were, yeah, when we considered. The Veninsky property, that shed was part of the.
Was it part of the calculation?
I think it was.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's one suggestion I had for.
Was that the bicycle shop? It's Veninsky, or is that before my time?
No, so that's one down the first street, Veninsky was the one down.
Oh, first street.
First street, yeah.
But the back addition.
Yes.
And then. Uh. Oh, which, I guess it'd be the fourth page, uh. You missed cannabis dispensary, see article three. Uh, but another one that I believe belongs in here, because I can see it coming, that's a. Cannabis consumption lounge. That's for uh, consumption of cannabis onsite. If you go back a couple of years when we started looking at, taking workshops on cannabis. There was the dispensary, which was to be treated like a liquor store. And then there was a lounge onsite consumption, which is to be treated like a bar. Uh, I think we need to have something in here about the consumption lounge.
Where, can those be separate or do you?
Yes, I would list them separate, one right underneath the other one.
But under the law.
And law, they are separate, uh. Dispensaries that they're starting to issue license, they have not yet. Uh, worked out the details of licensing, the uh, lounges, but it's in the works.
Yeah.
But they're not here today, they may not be here next year, but they'll be here.
Is, will alcohol be allowed at a, at a lounge, dispensary, cannabis lounge?
That, that's something that they have to work out yet.
They have.
But uh, in New York City, yes, New York City's got their own laws on it.
Right.
And they serve alcohol. And you can.
Smoke.
But to your, eat your gummies.
So a bar could presumably, a bar existing could get a.
It would be possible.
Might not, because of the smoking predilections.
Right, but does that go for babes?
Well, yeah.
I don't know.
Consumption of THC.
Yeah. Short-term rental is also. Not, hmm, short-term rental is not defined, there's hotel, there's motel. But there's no short-term rental.
Well, that's the one I missed.
Other words. Definitely are other words for short-term, I don't, I don't. Mr. Chairman, so can I ask a procedural question?
Yes, sir.
Is it gonna be open to the public to input to you guys on this?
Yeah.
Not sure, it's here, it may be.
Then, I'm, I'm willing to take public input at our work socials, uh. There will have to be a public hearing before the village board adopts.
Right.
I, I would just request you look at garage, because I think garage has been. Blown into. blown into garage slash apartments. Hmm. I think that the short-term rentals, you're just creating a situation where you're gonna increase the problem when you have rentals on the same level as. Just what you're seeing happen. But there's a lot of definitions.
Where was the article, it was, I think it was in Sunday's DNC talking about the a local municipality that had approved the uh approved allowing auxiliary about uh auxiliary dwelling units, eighty years.
Well, you are, I mean, this board is allowing that. And, you know, if I'm seeing a lot, I'm seeing a lot more rentals where I am, and if somebody were to go to garage next to me with the two apartments up above, I'm I'm gonna lose my mind. So, but there's a lot of definitions I'd love to comment on, because I think that that's another sort of a lot of your codes problems. You define things properly. They take out a lot of the problems you have with that code.
Whereas, as we know, with any good piece of legislation, okay? The words come from the examples that you've all lived through, okay? So the the more we can think of examples, the better, the better it's gonna be.
I, whenever it's developing, I love to code like yours, because there's so many holes in the codes. This code, and especially definitions.
Oh, yeah, it's.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest a real solid definition.
There's bed and breakfast, boarding house.
There's boarding house and there's bed and breakfast, though.
Bed and breakfast slash boarding house.
Oh, okay.
And.
But that doesn't get to short-term rental.
Well, it it could, it says it could, it could offer a a meal or not, and it could have up to six rooms for rent, with or without meals, a lodging house, tourist house, rooming house, chardonnay, the boarding house.
The short-term rental is a different category than. Has that not completely adopted?
No, it's still going to public.
Uh, so I'm building other than a hotel.
I believe it would have been.
You want to differentiate.
Let's think it over.
I think that makes sense.
But this, it was gonna go up at this board meeting on Thursday. But after seeing the issues that they're dealing with, which are like uh
They'll be active discussion, is that what you're saying?
And and the uh some fireworks probably uh decided to pull it and put it off to September instead, I didn't want it being uh considered by people who were angry.
Guilt by association. Guilt by association.
Yes.
Those ones are good in December.
See you in December.
Yeah.
Bye-bye. Hey, you know when costumes, you're sitting there like. Is that why he's here?
No, no.
Are you bored?
I am. And it's just wonderful, see, I haven't been doing, I miss you.
Yeah.
All right.
Always nice to have.
Thank you, Bruce.
Bye-bye.
We like your input.
Mark, thank you, Mark.
I'll be back, gotta keep my eye on uh what my my daughter's doing here and my nephew.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, well, let's, I I think we're right on your first one. Building.
Yeah.
Uh, quickly, um dwelling modular. What's this minor dimensions of sixteen feet?
Let's see.
Yeah, I didn't understand that one either.
Kevin, are you still there?
Well, that one is struck now.
But but mine, minor, you, I'm taking that, that you put the minor in there.
I am assuming minor, they with the uh.
A detached one-family dwelling unit with a minimum set, minimum installed minor dimension of.
Where was that again, Bill?
Under dwellings. Dwelling module.
Mine is struck. It's it's uh omitted.
I have nothing struck on mine on. Yeah, mine is neither, the minor dimension of sixteen feet is highlighted in yellow.
When I read it earlier, it was not struck, now it's.
It's all. So do you download it or are you online?
I'm uh, I'm online.
Uh, details. Well, I had to assume maybe that's with a a single, you know, modular homes usually kind of two halves. Darling, you saw the uh.
Yeah.
Bay Street.
But modular is also can be a trail.
No, modular, the state changed the definition a while ago, modular is uh comes in pieces on like a flatbed. Uh, a mobile home, manufactured home, comes on its own axle with, and then um sits on, used to be able to sound ABS pads, can no longer sound ABS pads, now it has to be on peers. Um, or a foundation, and then you have to break the axle so it can't be removed in the future.
Okay, so this definition for modular.
Yep.
Coming from the state?
Yeah, so we struck, I realized when I was reading through it, um I I'll double check it, the reason it was highlighted is the zoning board wanted me to double check it. I just struck the double wide because that puts us in a problem with our flood plan. And you're not allowed to have a mobile manufactured home in a flood plain, but according to that definition, you could. So it put us in this weird predicament, so I just struck it when I was going through it, and then the zoning board asked me to review it again and bring it to your attention, and then we'll find the real definition for it.
Okay, uh, minor dimension sixteen foot, what is it?
I think originally this was trying to, I, so Nesbit, Judge Nesbit wrote everybody's code books back in the eighties. I would assume he was trying not to have single wides, he wanted double wide uh houses put together. And it's like a modular home.
So. All right.
Okay.
By the way, Kevin, I think you did a nice job on updating what you were given.
Was that to me, sorry?
I said, having seen what you were originally given and what you've given us did a nice job fixing it.
Thank you, it was a lot of work.
A lot of work, yes. Uh. Kevin?
Yep.
On a road stand, it's highlighted.
Yep.
Is that, is that a definition you get from somewhere else?
No, if it's not underlined or black, uh, like for you it'd be bold and underlined. If it's not, then it means it was already in the book, and I didn't make it up.
Okay, I I did have a question. I had noticed at least two houses that are now selling eggs and things off their front porch.
Yep.
Do they need a permit?
Uh, be under peddler's permit, and they're exempted from any wares or goods that they produce.
Okay, well, chickens are producing it though.
You can't have chickens in the town, but.
No, but they might have them at a different property and then bring them in.
There.
Okay, so under roadside stand, couldn't that be any pop-up stand that's selling?
Seven days.
Anything.
It's uh needs a structure.
Yeah. But structure is defined as
any static.
Any step, you know.
Construction of building materials included, buildings.
If it, it's highlighted, right, that one is? Yeah, so if it's highlighted, they wanted a new definition made for it, zoning was requesting a new definition be made.
Okay. So I would just suggest that it be more than just sale of local produce.
I'll leave the um, the red dictionary book over here for you guys, so you guys can go through and check um the legal dictionary, the court dictionary, to see what they have for road stand.
Page three forty-two.
Oh, do you have the book there?
Yeah.
Perfect.
There's four. Um.
Four possible options.
Yeah, four possible. Uh, all four of them talk about farm produce. I guess the other one was all under garage sale.
So. So we're defining roadside stand as only dealing with produce and not and anything else is under somebody, some other classification.
Yeah, so the the bicycle rental would not be a roadside stand.
Right.
It would be.
But if I set up a stand and was selling clothing.
Well. The definition of garage sale here is to sell or offering or sell of new, used, or second-hand items of tangible personal property from anyone residential premises, the seller was tangible personal property from residential premises entitled garage sale, yard sale, tax sale, woods sale, gone sale, attic sale, basement sale, apartment sale, flea market. Maybe several more.
Tangible or occasion.
Yeah, for occasional.
Sale advertised to the public.
Not a permanent, variable city, not there for three days.
So it's, it's impermanent, is what it.
Yeah, it suggests.
So the road stand specifically says local produce, produce is.
That could be produce, there's a lot of produce that you're sold. It's becoming local.
But produce is by definition, isn't that like vegetables or something that you grow?
Yeah, that's for me it is.
Or eggs or.
Yeah.
Can you sell?
Eggs, I'm not sure they are defined as produce.
No.
It might be. You think agricultural.
That's.
Well, that's.
Yeah, it gets very broad very quickly.
Yeah, okay.
Now, the interesting thing is that all four definitions here, the produce has to be produced by the, you can't be market, you can't be a.
You can't be, you can't be purchasing wholesale and selling retail.
Yeah.
You're gonna be producing it.
That'd be a resale business, I don't think, and that would be like a home occupation, but it'd be a different thing.
You know, what, you go to uh like Rochester uh market. I helped out at the one stand for a few weeks to help a friend. But they were apple farmer, had a lot of apples, but there were also bananas and.
Right.
Cane loads and.
Blueberries.
And we had that.
Yeah.
Here?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the definition of residences, residential uh says it does not include boarding houses. Uh, I'm sorry, does not include transient accommodations. Such as hotels, motels, hospitals, so. What is a short-term rental, it's not, is a short-term rental is not a residence, apparently? We haven't made research, but.
Is that a new definition or old definition?
We're trying to come up with a definition for short-term rentals.
Okay, if you want to, do you want to send it to chapter one fifty-one, assuming it's gonna get adopted or no? Not saying it's gonna get adopted, but you could leave it, say, you either make a definition, or you already had one, right, in one fifty-one? So you could just make it the same.
Yeah, it, in the book it defines short-term rental, any dwelling or portion thereof is available for use or is used for accommodations at lodgings, I guess. They, if he were other compensations for a period less than thirty consecutive days. Which I think.
Which is what we got.
Yeah.
So is that gonna be added?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that should be added, and it also makes reference to one fifty-one, yeah.
Kevin, in uh the comprehensive guide, they refer to uh property over on Artoreta, they want to see turned into a light camping, something or other. We've got stuff on. We we've got stuff on. RV parks, trailer parks. We don't have anything on tent camping, do we?
What was the question? I'm sorry, I can't.
Oh, that's all right. I was. Tent camping.
Yep.
I think that's they were referring to as light impact camping. They were suggesting for Marjorie.
Where are Marjorie? You're talking about with Phil's property, not single them out? Or are you talking about the guy that was just on tonight, Chris?
Yeah, the six acre lot there, just down the road across the street from Bill.
Uh, the county property.
Uh, could be, let me. Uh. I'll go back in two weeks. Uh, that's all right.
Oh. Yeah, I see. And tent camping would be, I mean, if that's what they're, it's really called primitive camping is what they call it nowadays. That's the definition of the state. So you have glamping, primitive camping, and then uh I think there's like open camping or something like that. Or it's just kind of like a campsite and then it's the mix.
Or. Speaking of camping, off. Off this uh. Did any progress uh get made on that property next to Youngman's there?
Property next to Youngman's uh.
The one that uh. The uh. RV park was looking at.
Oh, the the twenty two acres.
Yeah.
No, uh, no further progress on that at all. Last time they backed off anything with it.
It's filters and, okay. All right. I just hadn't seen it for so, so I can go back up on. Any other question about definitions in article one?
I'm sure there are gonna be more. I don't see any now.
When, what do we stop for the night? Uh, we can look at it again and.
Yeah.
That may be tackle. The second article, article two.
Okay.
Can I add the motion to adjourn?
Make a motion that be adjourned. So.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Thank you all.
Good.
Have a good night, guys.
You too.
Thanks, Kevin.
Good night. Bruce, and just to confirm, you sent the email you said early in the meeting to uh cancel one fifty one this month, right?
I couldn't hear.
Cancel one fifty one, you sent.
Yes, I I sent an email to Tracy and to that. Asking him to bump it back to September.
All right, perfect. All right, thank you.
All right.
Have a good night. Bye.
Bye.